All right, thank you everybody for coming. It's now 5:30, so we're gonna start, uh, call to order.
Mayor Boren.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tim Perry.
Here.
Councilmember Caffey.
Here.
Councilmember Walker.
Here.
Councilmember Oliveris.
Here.
Councilmember Starnes.
Here.
Councilmember Melton.
Here.
All right, please join me for the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. The invocation tonight is Carissa Samagel.
Hello, everyone. My name is Carissa Samagel. I go to Rockdale High School. I am in National Honor Society, Student Council, and I'm currently earning my Associate's Degree while in high school. I would like to open us with a prayer. Will everyone please bow their heads? Eternal God, we thank you for this day and for the season of Advent. Your Son, the Prince of Peace, showed us how to live and speak with kindness and grace to one another. Grant your blessings on our community and guide our mayor and council as they discuss important matters. Bless all of our city employees and the citizens of our dear town. Mayor Wisdom, lead all of us in our daily lives, we pray. Amen.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Congratulations on TBI.
We got any citizens communication?
Yes.
It's usually cold in here, see, I'll be boy. Yeah, I just wanted that up here. All right, so we're gonna skip, uh, citizens communication, we'll come back to it, and we're gonna go, uh, ahead with the, uh, recognition, uh, the proclamation of the Rockdale High School Football Team. Uh, Rockdale High School is known for its competitive nature for the Battle of the Bell with Cameron High School, and this recognition relates to the team winning the yearly Battle of the Bell Football Game with a forty-seven to twenty-one win over Cameron High School on October twentieth, two thousand twenty-three, and since nineteen fifty-four, the winner has received the Big Brass Belt to Ring Victory, and the bell was donated to the two schools by the Rockdale Sandow Southern Railroad in nineteen fifty-four. And the coaching staff, players, and support of the two thousand twenty-three Rockdale High School Football Team are very much deserving of recognition for their success. I, Brett M. Boren, Mayor of the City of Rockdale, have the distinct honor of congratulating the two thousand twenty-three Rockdale High School Football Team for winning this year's Big Brass Victory Bell. Congratulations. We can do one with the city council, and then do one with the, just the football team, and then have the coaches come up here. So if y'all wanna come up here. Mayor Brett, it wasn't just a victory, it was a beat down.
Thank you, thank you. If I could add a little bit on that, um, being from Texas, football is everything. Friday Night Lights in Rockdale, Texas are part of what our culture is. So thank you again, uh, for being that part, uh, that builds a community, that gets everybody together. The fans, the grandparents, the citizens, we thank you for that. That's a big part of Rockdale that we're proud of, and you guys are putting in the effort, the practices, the injuries, and that night when we won that bell, it rang all through town, through fair, through the fair and everything. So thank you again for bringing back that civic pride. We appreciate it.
All right, we ready? One, two, three, oh, oh, oh.
Do I need to kneel down so I don't block them? Let us get out of here now.
Y'all are dismissed unless you wanna hang.
Let's get out of here, let them.
Let the coaches get in.
Where are you going?
We're gonna let the coaches go. Oh, yeah, yeah, go ahead. Will you get one without the council?
Oh, without the council.
Can you hold that proclamation just so we can hold it? Can you see it there?
All right, ready? One, two, three.
Thank y'all for having us. Be pretty soon.
Thank y'all for having me.
I don't know who you're looking to like that.
Lady, definitely sit up here or over there if y'all'd like.
Do you need, you need to sustain from that? Cause we both, we both hope.
Can you order me a booster seat for next? Sit on my legs so I could see.
Is what your first part?
Yellow pages out there.
I read it differently.
Okay, we're gonna go back to, uh, item number five, citizens communication. Uh, we'll start with, uh, Angela.
Hello, my name's Angela Sarah.
And just to reiterate, we'll give you three minutes to speak, and the council cannot talk with you, so you're just gonna have to address the council.
Okay. We are hoping to find a, a resolution to getting animal control to work with us, um, instead of against us. Um, a lot of this community is taking on animal control responsibilities, and we are quite frankly broke. Uh, my facility houses between seventy and eighty dogs. I take in her dogs, um, that should go out to the shelter, and they do not. Um, she doesn't want them, she says she cannot accept them. So, the other day, I picked up one dog here, he was gonna be killed if I wouldn't have got him off the street and took him out there. Uh, somebody's dog, and, um, in good condition, neutered, good body condition. Um, the dog's carrying parvo. I've lost how many dogs out at my facility right now? This is not my job, and this is not a community problem. This is, and it's turned into a community problem. Um, this is my kennel manager. We used to have a hundred and thirty dogs at our old facility, so we know what we're talking about. But it gets a little bit, it, it's just, the homeless dog population across the entire United States is, is at epic proportions, except for here. They don't wanna expand, they don't wanna do anything to help us, um, they wanna just ignore it, and we can't ignore it. Because it's, it's, it's becoming worse and worse and worse. So I, I'm at wits' end. I can't pick up any more dogs. I have a parvo problem now at my shelter. And we've been in business for almost twenty years. We're a private shelter, we're out by Alcoa.
Just for the record, will you tell the audience a little bit about your business?
Uh, we're a rescue, emergency rescue and rehabilitation facility for homeless dogs, aggressive dogs, behavior dogs. Um, I'm a certified trainer. Um, I take classes every year, um, for behavior, animals, animal, um, psychology. The last class I took was advanced psychology and, or psycho, animal psychology and advanced cognition in, in animals. Um, we're versed in, um, well-versed in CPR and first aid. It just goes on and on. A lot of education has been put into this facility, and we've been around for almost twenty years. Oh, yeah, we do, we, yeah, that's like, at the end of it, we do rehome them, you know, we, we rehabilitate them, we get them back to where they can re-enter society. Um, we also do a lot of, uh, groundwork training for, um, so they could enter their, they could probably enter some, you know, like an emotional support animal. Um, they're ready to take their canine good citizenship test, um, when, when they come out of our facility, um, and that type of thing. We're just, we've been around for a long time. And we've worked with animal control here, and I, I don't have words for it. I do not have words for it. That dog should not have bring a parvo to my facility. I lost four beautiful dogs. I've got, I don't know how many still sick, were under quarantine. I, I can't even take in dogs for work right now because of that. Um, and the community, the residents of the community are still rescuing dogs, and they all call me. They call me. I can't. I don't have the authority to arrest or, or write citations. They expect me to do that. I cannot do that. It's, it's not my position. I don't have the authority to do that. So I, I, yeah. You know? Yeah. So I, yeah, we've got a lot of situations going on out there. And, you know, it's not Rockdale, it's not about Rockdale, it's about what's going on in the entire country. The prices of everything have gone through the roof, so people throw their animals in the street. There's no spay and neuter laws, there's no, there's no accountability for vaccines, um, rabies, dogs that should be confined in their, in their, in their, in their yards, they're just running around loose. Obviously, now we have a parvo problem because I've got it at my facility, and I picked this dog up in Rockdale. So, I mean, how, how, what are we supposed to do? I don't understand.
We'll have to talk amongst ourselves and kinda figure out a game plan, but I appreciate, I'm a big dog lover, and I appreciate you bringing this to our attention.
It's heartbreaking. It is heartbreaking. It's heartbreaking. Right now, we're taking in dogs from California. California's at the top of the euthanasia list. They're euthanizing fifty to sixty dogs a day out of each shelter in the entire state of California. And, and the only shelter that's not on overload is ours. I'm like, she's like, they called me one day and said, "Oh, can you help me, Angela?" And I'm like, "Yeah, sure, what do you need?" I'm, I'm over capacity. I said, "How many dogs do you have?" She goes, "Twelve." I stopped breathing, cause I have eighty. Our capacity started out at forty-five. We've expanded. We've opened up buildings that we used at our other location. It's, I feel like I'm in the Twilight Zone some days with this. It's, it's just surreal. It's surreal. But it's coming here, and we have a lot of investment coming here too, cause we have Samsung, we have expansions, we have, you know, we've got the, the data center out there, uh, at Alcoa. There's a lot of stuff going on here. And our, and our animals are treated as inhumanely as what all of us see in the streets here.
Yes, ma'am.
It's disgusting.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So, hi, my name's Tina. Um, I live over off of, um, Ferguson. Uh, the street next to me is San Gabriel, and there's a group of us women here, there's a lot more that, the community, and basically, I'm the street person, and over the summer, on Facebook, uh, they, I, I saw a post about these two, these puppies that were in extreme heat. Everybody was coming against the cops, against the, uh, Dog Pound Lady. I walk, I said, "San Gabriel, that's right there." So I went over there and checked out the situation, went to Walmart, got a tarp, and gave him shade. So, but my, I, I know Karen, and so I'm not here to throw anybody under the bus. I just, there's gotta be a situation. On San Gabriel, these people have fourteen dogs right now, puppies. They have a dog that is, keeps getting pregnant. It's not even their dog. It showed up on their land, and they made the mistake of feeding it. So, when I covered these three puppies up, I posted them. I took them to Mylum Tetch and Love, got them fixed, so, and got them their shots. I paid for their shots. Got them covered, got them housed. I put them on Facebook. Got rid of one, but there's still two over there. Then the girl gets, the baby get, the mom gets pregnant again. She had twelve puppies. Five died. Now there's seven. And I taught these people how to catch the dog, the mama dog, how to get it caught. They caught it twice, but it's an older woman who could barely walk, a son who's touched, a drug addict daughter, and they just go days without feeding or watering these animals and the puppies. So I keep going over there and, and trying to educate them, and I even listed these puppies on Facebook, trying to find homes for them. But this, we caught this dog twice. I got it in the cage twice. But when going in feeding them, the, the young man let the dog out twice. So now the dog's not gonna go anywhere near the cage. But in the meanwhile, on San Gabriel, we have four stray intact males that is going around impregnating everything. Right around the corner from me, they had Chihuahua puppies. They're running the streets now. They're not fixed. We're having a breeding situation on San Gabriel, and yes, I've talked to Karen about it, and like she said, there's nothing I can do about it. But if we don't do something about it, these people have already got fourteen dogs. I'm sure the mama dog's pregnant again from the black dog that keeps coming around and fighting other dogs in the neighborhood. So I don't know if it's gonna take somebody getting hurt, bit, or a car accident, but it, it's, it's out of control over there, and something has to happen. I mean, I'm, I've got a German Shepherd that I chased around Rockdale for months. I got it out in my car. First thing I did is went and got her fixed. It's like, and then I'm gonna edu, you know, she's skittish, I'm gonna educate her, try to find her a home. But, I mean, everybody's doing it, cats, dogs. I, I mean, there's the one out there in Rockdale, um, at Walmart right now. I went the other night, tried to catch that one. It's crossing seventy-nine. Somebody, nobody wants to hit a dog. So when they swerve to hit this dog and kill somebody on oncoming traffic, because we can't pick up these animals, I, I'm not, I'm not following it. You know what I'm saying? It's, somebody's gonna get hurt. And somebody needs to get a control of this breeding situation on San Gabriel, because it's out of control, you know? Like, the, she's found a home for this white dog at Wal, uh, Walmart, but nobody has the ability to go sit there every night, catch this dog, and then when we catch it, what do we do with it? Cause we all work, so it's like, we need a place to put these dogs so we can get this dog a home. You do, you know, I mean, do, what do we do as a community? Do we open up buildings and, and, you know, there's a lot of animal lovers in this town, and, 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 and what do we do as far as, like, these people in San Gabriel? All those dogs need to be taken from them, point blank. They, they don't feed, they don't water, they don't even have money. I don't know how much money I've spent buying dog food for these people, and now the puppies are starving. And I, you know, I'm only one person and, and other women here, and we need help. And as a community, we need to get a grip on this before it becomes a cat situation. Everybody in this room knows about the cat situation in this town.
Yes, ma'am.
And it's, dogs are heading right, right there with them. So thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate y'all bringing that to our attention.
We got one more? Sorry, is it Claire?
No, it's Sherry Cushion. Yeah, so I'm just kinda here to support, um, Angela and Tina, because I'm probably one of the annoying people that always call them and be like, "Hey, there's a dog here or there." And I'm, I'm, you know, continuously like contacting different shelter, not shelters, um, rescues and stuff, seeing if they can find spots, but everybody's always full, so, yeah, um, it's just like my dad, and it's worse on the east side of town, I believe. I think there's more over there. I know I rescued a dog over there in, in May that had been abandoned for over a year, and it was sleeping on the ice and stuff, and then somebody brought it to my attention, and our lab had died, so I took it and, you know, rescued that dog, but I can't take anymore. My husband won't let me. Two is more than he lets me have. But, um, so, like, my dad will call me and be like, "There's two, you know, dogs in a cage over here," and he lives on the east side of town, and, um, and I'll call them, because the dogs will be in the sun. They don't have no food, no water. They'll go over there, they set up a whole thing, and then the dogs were tangled up in their leads, and my dad feeds stray cats over there, so, um, I'll, I'll call them and they'll go and help. But again, you know, it's, it's just, I'm just here to support what they're saying, because, yeah, we all do work, and I'll have to text, um, Amanda over there and be like, "I saw the white dog at Walmart. I'm on my way to Del Valley to work. I can't stop. Do you got time to go?" You know? So it's just that kinda thing. If there was a city person we could call that could pick the dog up and keep them, um, sometimes I'm good about finding them homes, but, um, through a rescue, but, um, yeah, and, um, yeah, and then we work with Amanda and Robin, and that's a whole nother thing. That's with the cats. You do not want the dogs to be like the cats. They can, sometimes trapped in sixty at a time at one location, and that's, that's all over town. Um, but, yeah, I'm just here to support them, and Angela doesn't give herself enough credit. She does, she does, military men, you know, they have emotional support, have come to her place, and there's some beautiful stories about dogs that go with them, um, that she has, um, retrained and stuff, so, yeah. So I'm just here to see if there's something as a community, if the city, I don't know. I'm not adverse on the city ordinances, so I don't know if there's one that requires, you know, spay and neuter. If not, is that something that we could get? If that's something we could, you know, I'm, you're not gonna go around knock on people's door, but if the dog was picked up, at least, you know, have a citation if it, the, if the ordinance wasn't met with that animal, so, anyway.
Well, thank you.
Thank you.
Angela, you may not give yourself enough credit. I happen to drive by twice a day, at least. I see you out there countless hours. I've seen you out there late at night, early mornings. And this is duly noted, so thank you.
We are so overcapacity. It's surreal, and Janice used to be animal control, and Janice was, um, a disorganized mess. When you walked in, the opposite was like, and I was like staring her out of the way of sharp objects, but you know what? When you walked into the shelter, we had three to four dogs in one kennel. We had dogs in crates stacked to the ceiling. We had up to thirty and forty dogs, and I had the same amount out at my place, and we had like between us eighty, ninety dogs. The community loved her. She, there was not an animal she turned away. You know what I mean? She, we, she was, we were no kill. And now, and now, uh, some people told me the other day, they took a, uh, some pups were dumped in their front yard in the city. They took them to the shelter, and they were refused because they, and shoot, they were told that they were a kill shelter, they'd euthanize them. That's disgusting. If I can take care of ninety dogs with the mess that you drive by every day, this is a disaster. My place is a disaster. Um,
Thank you, ma'am. We gotta move on with the, the meeting.
Thank you all.
Your message definitely heard.
Thank you.
Thank you, but thank you.
Um, okay, we're gonna move along to, uh, item six B. A recognition of city accomplishments for the year two thousand twenty-three.
Counsel, Barbara Holly is out today, um, with a broken ankle, so I'll be your presenter, so you're gonna have to deal with me. Barbara thought it was a good idea to give you guys an update for our year of what each department's been up to, so that way you can see the highs that you may not always hear about in council meetings. So we're gonna start off with the Police Department. This is also, I'm just referring to page twelve of your packet and so on, so if you wanna go with me, you can. I'm gonna kinda abbreviate all of these accomplishments, cause there's a lot of them. So first with the Police Department, Sergeant Hubenick was responsible for the investigation for the murder suspect, and was able to get that done within three-week time. Then our Police Department bravely responded to the five-hundred block of College Street, and there was an active shooter there, and during the shooting, we had Captain Goodrich, we had Hubenick, and Puente noticed that there were some residents that snuck back in into a building that was getting bullet holes through it. Through their bravery, they went and took a window unit out and got the suspects out instead of keeping them in there, and so they got the Medal of Valor for that. And then the last was our new hire, Sergeant Rodriguez. Sergeant Rodriguez was busy when he first started, because he'd conducted the investigation from RISD for the inappropriate actions from a teacher, and through his investigation, he got the teacher to turn herself in on two felony warrants. And then on a positive note, they had a really good night's out. I hope everybody was able to attend. This was their second annual event, and I'm assuming they're gonna keep it going. Now we're gonna move on to Public Works. So the long-awaited project for our line replacement has officially begun, and that is underway, and for the first time in fifteen years, all TCEQ violations are gone. So we do not have any pending violations or anything currently. The twelve-inch line on the Moore property was fixed this year, and then we also got four roads zipped through you guys, giving them a zipper. Thank you for that. Development Services, we had two hundred and seventeen code cases this year, and we had about eighty-eight percent compliance. The other twelve percent was either we didn't have somebody to mail the case to, or it's pending in court currently. Within, uh, these council meetings and P and Z, thirteen ordinances were passed this year. Some key ones was we altered the vacant commercial structure ordinance, so that way, instead of registering three a year, now we have a list of about forty. Um, another one is you put standards on boat and RVs on what you want that to look like, so that way it's not a blight, and it's actually something that'd be good. And we actually have a new one that's utilized that on the end of town on the east side, the Carnegie property. And then we've also done tire distributors to try to tackle the tire problem. The Home Program had one house built this year at twelve-hundred Highland. If you haven't had a chance to go look at it, go take a look at it. We have a lot that are getting close to getting underway, and we'll have more for you when we get there. And then Cornerstone, um, Phase One A has officially been completed as far as getting the groundwork in. Um, Public Works and Development Services went out there Friday last week and have accepted that, and we received a bond for whatever they haven't put in, so that way, in case they don't put it in, we have the money to put it in. Um, so they will be going vertical first quarter of two thousand twenty-four. Perimeters are gonna be getting pulled here in a couple of weeks. So you'll start seeing homes pretty quick out there. Phase One B's underway, um, probably about halfway, and then you'll start seeing some more roads and infrastructure being put in for that portion. Now our Utility Department, um, they held four bulk pickup events this year. They always do two at the house, and then two at Fair Park in case somebody wants to bring a trailer load. They also have installed new water meters that have helped automated the system, and that will store the information in the cloud, so that way the customer can see if they have a leak. They won't have to call City Hall for it. They can actually pull their own information. And then the Parison Center got new flooring. Now for the library, the libraries continually held the First Friday Coffee, which has been a success, as well as having children's storytime and a summer reading program. They've also purchased new computers for themselves and citizens to utilize. Our Finance Department, through their record-keeping, were able to get two hundred thousand dollars roughly in reimbursement from Winter Storm Mara. They have automated our payroll, which is approximately gonna save us about a thousand staff hour. They have automated our payroll, which is approximately gonna save us about a thousand staff hour, which is about a part-time position for the city. And then they passed their audit this year. The municipal court, um, through daily fines and holding the, um, when code enforcement puts somebody in the court, they've held him to the fire, so the budget in paid roughly sixteen thousand, six hundred and fourteen dollars and shut down due to the fines and pressure the court was putting on them. And then the old Maynard Oaks building is paid roughly ninety-five hundred dollars, and he's now expressed the interest to sell because the fine keeps increasing.
How much has it been?
Ninety-five hundred dollars.
How much is he up?
Currently, I couldn't tell you that, um, just because all the court complaints we haven't put in due to an agreement. Uh, but he hasn't made his agreement, so when they go in, it's gonna be significant. It may be like thirty thousand dollars. It's gonna be a lot.
Is he gonna put it on the market now?
He expressed interest in doing that. And for our city secretary, she's able to get our meetings online this year, so that way anybody can go back and re-watch if they, uh, couldn't attend the meeting. And they've also updated the city website. So that is it for the departments, and that's kind of what we've been up to this year.
Thank you all.
Thank you, Ben.
Great job, Roxanne. Gerald.
Please. All right. Item number seven, workshop. A conduct a workshop on low-income housing. Mr. Mario.
Want to thank the council and David for having me on the agenda here tonight. I'm here to follow up with something the council had and Barbara had last spring. It was, um, a homelessness meeting, I believe there was two or three meetings. Uh, the ladies talked about community issues and also San Gabriel. Uh, what you see before you is a property that, uh, Rockdale Housing purchased. Uh, those are our plans, there were plans to build, uh, property. However, uh, we did not qualify for the, uh, T D H C Affairs nine percent housing grant. The city of Rockdale did not qualify, so there was no use in Rockdale Housing putting in the application for a nine percent tax grant. It doesn't qualify. I'm here today to follow up to see if the city council would like to join Rockdale Housing Authority in finding funding to build this property. We got the four percent tax credit, multifamily bonds, uh, Jim Gibson has some ideas as well. The Rockdale Housing Authority is in good condition. Our problem is we have HUD funds, which can only be used for the property we have now. We have a few non-HUD funds, which we use to purchase this property. So we have about a year left of non-HUD funds to pay for this property if we can't find the correct funding for affordable and homelessness shelter. Uh, we'll have to sell. So I'm here proposing if the council would come up and let's see what we can do together to find funding.
How much, um, was this project gonna cost approximately?
Our architect, depending where you go, duplexes or single, uh, between eight and twelve million.
Is this the very end of San Gabriel Road where the trailer park used to be?
Yes, the old trailer park, exactly, councilman. It's four acres. Uh, we have taken out seventy percent of the old mobile homes. We still have a few there we're trying to clear out, but, uh, funding is tight, so we're not able to, uh, clear the property of the last mobile homes there.
Can you educate me on the green dots, what those are?
Uh, I believe Barbara said we needed twenty percent greenery, so those are trees.
Okay, there we go.
Yeah, I think it was twenty percent. Is that what the council came up with, twenty percent?
Yes.
So I'm here proposing this, um, I'm gonna be short and sweet, and that's what I'm here for, looking for funds and money to carry this project on. Uh, if we have to, um, start a new, um, project, two board members from housing, two from council, any ideas this board? Do y'all have any plans for homelessness or low affordable housing since the springtime?
Nothing changes.
Nothing has followed up to that?
I think it's definitely still needed. I think, um, we have housing insecurity, I mean, nationwide, especially in our town, given our demographics, I mean, we definitely need it, however, we don't have the funds for it. So I don't know who would help us find those funds.
Okay.
Mario, is this, just so I understand, you're talking about all of this is new development?
Yes, that's the old Shore Forest, yes, four acres.
I knew this, I, I recognized this one, because I didn't know if this was...
There's another section.
Yeah. It goes off to Smith Road and San Gabriel.
And so currently the housing authority has bought the prod, property?
Is buying it, yes.
Working on clearing it off?
Yes. Uh, we thought with all the projects that were coming to the city, uh, that we would qualify for the points. However, there's no way, there's no use in us spending the money to apply for it if we don't qualify.
Mario, I want to thank you for being here tonight. I know that you do great work out there. I have a couple of questions. I know that you operate at the Cordova Place with a waiting list. How many are on that waiting list right now is my first question?
Oh, good question, Dave. Over a hundred. Over the last, the application process has been closed for two years. Does anyone know the history of that place, the last four years, five years?
Of Cordova?
Yes. Yeah, I took over an establishment that was about to be taken over by HUD. It was badly ran, uh, the money was out. We have the funds now. Uh, we just received a two million dollar grant, which is a lot of money. But again, that's HUD money, I have to spend it on Cordova. That's for HVACs, uh, windows and, uh, cleaning the ducts. So we got money, we're in good condition now. We was about to go belly up, we're in good condition. Over the two years, Dave, uh, not a day goes by, not a week goes by that someone doesn't come in and cry in person or on the phone because of the lack of affordable housing. Uh, some of my seniors are waiting two years, and they're patient. Last person I put in, she waited two years. Uh, she was homeless for forty-eight hours, because I had to get that apartment up and running, um...
So my follow-up question, uh, Mario, is of the hundred, I don't want this to sound cold or anything, but of those hundred, how many of those hundred are actually Rockdale citizens? Could we be setting ourselves up for something where build it and they will come?
I would lie if I told you the correct answer, but I am gonna take a guess eighty percent or more. Now, with the application process being closed, we would have over three hundred, if not more, if we were to continue to accept applications during the last two years.
And if someone lives in Hutto and they want to fill out an application here, they're fine, and they get put in that list just like anyone else?
Yes, but again, the majority, I would say eighty to eighty-five percent are Rockdale or Midland County tenants or residents. Uh, any other questions, uh?
How does, how does that screening process work? Do you all do that, or does the state do that? To say somebody qualifies to be in that facility or doesn't qualify? And is there a timeframe, or can they live there forever and ever?
There is no timeframe. Uh, the income limit, there can be over income, our max is sixty-eight thousand for a family, and we have no one close to that right now at Cordova in our sixty apartments. The new project could gather money if we have fair market rent, a thousand or fifteen hundred. No one is paying that at Cordova. But this project could make it on its own if we just get the seed money, state or federal money. I believe this project, I know this project, there are enough people to fill these apartments.
So you're not necessarily pitching it to be HUD at all, it's, it's, it's affordable?
Yes, or whatever we come up with. It could be twenty percent vets, uh, workforce has funding, workforce housing, there's all kinds of housing out there. Uh, I just can't get any more from HUD.
Sure.
Unless we tear this place down and build over there, but these apartments we have now are in good condition. Has the council had any more citizens approach y'all regarding affordable housing?
I personally haven't. It's kind of died down after a couple of hot months of, uh, people in here saying, we gotta get homeless people off the streets, that, that sort of thing. I personally haven't been approached by anything since then.
I, I think it's a hot topic, and, and I think it will continue to be.
Okay. Um, is there any way we could, um, continue this at the next meeting? Or is there any way this council could, uh, think of any creative ideas that we can go into a partnership to help the citizens of Midland County?
When you say that there's federal and state money that's out there for us to go after, who typically would write, fill out the application or write the grant, uh, request?
Grant writers, and also there's private monies as well. Nonprofits can join with private entities as well. I have spoken with, uh, Jim Gibson here at M D D, uh, we are trying to get creative as well. So I am out begging and searching, and I can tell you, this county, this city, needs affordable housing. Grandmas, single moms, they're crying, well, Rockdale has sixty units, Cameron has a hundred and forty, plus they also have a hundred and fifty vouchers. Rockdale has no vouchers and only sis- sixty public housing units available.
What's a voucher?
A voucher is where, um, Lynn, you have a couple houses, you rent them to a tenant for a thousand, they can only afford five hundred, so HUD will pay the rest, it's a voucher. Uh, there's, we can also get money from vouchers as well, uh, from Central Texas Council of Governments, if we can get this up and running.
I haven't counted, how many units is this? I guess it says it right here.
Seventy. We propose studios, but also some, uh, duplexes, two-bedroom duplexes as well. So before I conclude, I would like to reach out to see if the council would talk about this and see if there's anything you can do to help us.
Mario, I think the next steps would be to have a collaborative meeting with Jim, Barbara, a couple of members of the council, and I can get, uh, Judge Bill Whitmire to come in and, and see what he can do on the county level as well.
Outstanding. That sounds like a plan, Mayor.
I'll get with Barbara tomorrow.
Okay.
Know you got Dave, who's willing to put his right foot in, and we'll find another council member that can get in on a meeting.
Okay. Any other questions? Council, Mayor, thank you.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
Appreciate it.
All right, next, next item. Uh, is the, uh, item number eight, consent agenda. All consent agenda items listed are considered to be routine by the city council and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member requests, in which event the item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered in its normal sequence on the agenda. Information concerning consent agenda items is available for public review.
I make a motion that we approve the consent agenda as we have it.
I'll second.
All in favor? Motion carries six zero. Item number nine, presentations. A receive a quarterly report from the municipal court. And let's, uh, congratulate our new, uh, municipal judge.
Well, since November the first, when I got appointed for this, uh, I've spent sixteen hours with the State, uh, Tlets and Seegis Group, uh, so I can get certified to magistrate class A, uh, Bs, As, and felonies. Uh, got that done within the two-week period, uh, so I was able to do that, which freed up some of the officers to where they didn't have to go straight to the county every time. Uh, I also went last week to a thirty-five hour, uh, court, uh, first, first, uh, court judge, uh, training session. Uh, it was sort of like going to, uh, somewhere and they dumped a bunch of stuff in a garbage can, shook it around, and then they had the truck haul it off, and that's what I felt like. I mean, it's thirty, thirty-five hours, and it probably should have been about sixty-five hours. Um, a lot of information crammed in there. Um, but, uh, it, it's a learning process, it's, it's just gonna take a little bit of time. Um, as far as, uh, magistrations, I think I've done twelve so far already. Um, we, uh, we seem to be getting quite a few of them in there. I mean, uh, our officers pick them up pretty quick, and we get them out pretty quick. Uh, well, we don't have to keep them in there very long. Uh, other than that, I really don't know what else to tell you yet. I mean, it's, it's still sort of all new, but I'm working on it, we'll, we'll get it figured out. Any questions? I mean, um...
Well, yeah, wel- welcome aboard. Uh, we told you back, uh, in, in closed session, I'll put it right out here in front of everybody. Uh, we put a lot of teeth in, into some ordinances, and, uh, we expect them to be fully adhered to. And, uh, know that, know that you're willing to do that for good, bad, or ugly, uh, that's what it is.
That's what it is.
And, uh, we, we look forward to, uh, moving this town forward, uh, with yours and Ben's help, uh, holding people accountable, not only on the police department side, but on the, uh, civil side as, as well. So, thank you, and, uh, look forward to it.
All right.
Thank you, everybody.
All right, nine B, receive a quarterly report from the Planning and Zoning Commission. Need some sunglasses.
I realize that it said it was a quarterly report, but then it dawned on me that actually it's the fiscal report or the annual report. So I'm gonna give you an annual report to sum up the year. And this is as of November twenty-first, twenty twenty-three. We had, uh, eight out of eleven scheduled monthly meetings. We had one no quorum, and we had two no agendas. We had seven ordinances that we were discussing. We discussed tire, vacant commercial, grass pavers, fence, ad seriscape, sidewalk curb vegetation, and, uh, parking on unimproved, uh, surfaces. We had eight plating or replats. We had one variance, and that was for a historically significant property. We had one training on electrical modular or mobility future. We had one rezone in September, and that was with Cornerstone. We had five citizens' communications wherein we had discussions with Text Dot, Fries and Associates, D R Horton. We had, uh, received a citizens' communications on a noise ordinance and also on a request to add the K to the central zone. We had nineteen workshops. Of those nineteen workshops, four dealt with corridors, seven dealt with downtown parking, fencing, Text Dot, downtown turs, East Cameron turs. Uh, the electrical vehicle charging took two workshops. We had a landscaping workshop, we had a workshop on game rooms. Uh, we had workshop over the comprehensive master plan. We had a workshop over businesses, uh, that had internal locking rooms. We had downtown lighting workshop, and we had an East Cameron corridor workshop. At the present time, your planning and zoning commission is one chair unfilled, and I think that's an agenda item for tonight. We have interfaced with the code enforcement officer monthly, making sure that our ordinances have teeth in them or needing modifications. We have, uh, met and represented at the dirt turning at Cornerstone. We've met our budget, we're not sure about it. If the, uh, city colors have changed, we may request an upgrade in our budget to, uh, change the colors of our shirts, uh, we'll talk about that later. Um, I did want to say that I did drive through Cornerstone, and whoever the citizens were that worked on the names of the streets, I gotta give an atta boy a shout-out on that. I did like one property up there, but it was at the corner of Dawson Perry Street, so I was a little nervous to even stay there very long. Uh, but a good job on naming of the streets in the Cornerstone out there. Uh, and planning and zoning commissioners were appointed the Historical Preservation Board. So everybody that's on planning and zoning is now on the Historical Preservation Board.
Thank you.
That is twenty twenty-three in review for us. Next year I'll try to do better because the fiscal year and the annual year don't line up, so I can't give you reports for December, but we'll, we'll work on that. Questions?
Is the number of members on, we ask a lot of planning and zoning, and we appreciate all y'all do. Y'all put in a ton of work, and it doesn't go unnoticed or unappreciated. Is the number of members on there adequate? And is the process of how people get on there, the right process to serve that board correctly?
That's a good topic for discussion. Some on the board would like to have more say-so in the selection process, but as it stands now, it actually comes from council.
Correct.
I danced around that as good as I could dance, but. Yeah.
What about the quantity of people available, y'all meet during the day, people have jobs, or you, do you have a hard time getting a quorum?
So, you know, I didn't give you all the details of all the meetings and so several of the meetings include electing of chair people and pro temps and, and also in there, we had to have one meeting where we have to decide, because most of my members presently are working members. And so they kind of have to choose the hours that we meet. So it doesn't come from me or anything like that, they decide, and so far, except for some health issues, we've done well with meeting quorum and all that. The, the problem that I might have, if, if you tell us we need eight members, I don't know where the new chamber office is gonna be located, but I guess we'd have to have a planning and zoning room the same size, because we can only get the same number of people seated for, for the meeting. We're, we're pretty well represented, Scott, help me out here, aren't we pretty well, aren't we pretty well balanced on east side, west side? We could, we're male and female and racially, we have Charles and probably one Hispanic would help to have a balance, if you were trying to be all inclusive.
That's great, and that was gonna be my next question as far as how diversified you felt it was, and so, thank you for answering that.
Close, I mean, it could be a little better, but we're close.
Have everybody represented.
Yeah, and, and we have a good educational mix and most of the people come prepared for the meetings, I have no problems with that whatsoever. And everybody that we've interfaced with D R Horton and even the ones that you'll have business with here in a little bit on, on, on a replat, they, they were impressed that we knew. Some cities you deal with, commissioners have no idea of the properties, but most of ours have lived here long enough that we know the property or the issues that are, that are being addressed, but.
You all also meet once a month, correct?
Do I?
You meet once a month, is that correct?
We meet twice a month.
Twice a month, I'm sorry.
Presently.
It was once a month.
We, the planning and zoning commission officially meets once a month. We have had so much learning with tours and, and reinvestment zones and, and all the, when I say tours, y'all know what I'm talking about, right?
Yes.
Tax, okay, tax incremental reinvestment zone, but we've had a learning curve and so we had to have workshops.
No, for sure.
And, and that's, and everybody's been able to make it so far, but that's how much business we have before us, because we, we allow one thirty to three thirty for the meeting and we can't get it all done.
I would assume that you guys are just gonna be more busy as time comes, as.
Well, that's what I warned, that, remember, I, well, I think you were here, I warned y'all that this was gonna happen. I didn't really think it was gonna happen in two years, but it's, it's accelerating. It's accelerating, so, a lot of business.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thanks, Doc. Item number ten ordinances, a consider and take any necessary action on the first reading of ordinance, amending the fee schedule for alcohol permit rates and water and wastewater rates.
So we have two items that we've added to our annual fee schedule update, the first is our T A B C permits we issue. Used to be at fifty percent state cost, now we're just proposing that we do it at a hundred percent instead of fifty percent. And we were just, so we'd follow their fee to the T. The second is the water and wastewater rates. So we're proposing an eight dollar and twenty-five cent increase and that would be split five dollars on the water side, three dollars and twenty-five cents on the wastewater side. So this is the first reading, you know, it'll come back to you in January for implementation, if that's something you guys are interested in doing.
Real quick, go ahead.
I was gonna ask a question, I think, probably for you and Kyle.
Yeah, the hundred percent of the T A B C fee, you're saying if T A B C, if an establishment pays a thousand dollars a, a year in a fee, the city wants another additional thousand dollars, or they're gonna get, okay?
We're gonna, whatever they, if they increase it, decrease it, whatever their rate's gonna be, that's what we're following. So the way it's written out is if they change it in the middle of your, ours is just automatically changed with them, because we didn't put that amount in there, it just says a hundred percent of T A B C.
And it used to be fifty percent.
Correct.
So educate me on how that works, so the state charges, if you sell alcohol, the state charges you two hundred dollars and up until this change, the city would charge you another hundred?
I guess, I don't remember, I guess they do, I mean, the county gets it too, and everybody has their little hand in the kitty.
Yep.
What's the reason for this?
They go through a city process to get approval as well, our receptionist and city secretary handle those portions. And so we just always charge them half of that rate for our process in the game.
Processing. That other fifty percent would be for the processing?
So currently it's just fifty percent would be the processing, that's how we would consider it, it's gonna be the same, it would just be an increased rate, but we would be doing the same thing we've always done in our portion of it, because our responsibilities haven't changed in this process. We're just proposing the fee to change.
Five fifty to a hundred, not fifty to like sixty.
That is what our city manager decided.
Oh, gotcha, okay, I'm just asking questions.
No, that's just, no, I'm not upset at all, that's just, that's all I can tell you, is that just, she would rather see it at the full rate instead of just half of it.
And is that something, beer sellers or alcohol sellers, is this annual?
It's an annual fee, I will say this, and I don't have any question, we all have to the next one. We paid ours recently and I know it doubled if not tripled, the state did. And I asked them why and shit off the record, they said, they, we were told across the board they need more money. And so they just boom, hit it like that, so the state has gone up at least double.
Okay.
Since last year, but I said I don't have exactly that information right now.
Do we know how similar municipalities of our size, like how, what they are charging? Because I'm, 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 I don't know where Esme's thoughts are, but it's like we're punishing people who might be, you know, doing business here.
Well, yeah, they're already investing in the, in the city and creating a business here, I would just hate to stop them with like another fifty percent. I could see the need for increase, however, everybody's kind of struggling right now, citizens, business alike, that, that's just a lot.
Even, even the businesses that are serving alcohol are sometimes struggling.
I could see the need for increase if the workload increased, however, the paperwork load is not increasing.
That's why I was wondering what, what the fee was for, the processing, but if the process is the same, I don't understand why we need a reset.
And the city processes, city and county process is very minimal compared to what T A B C processes, if that makes sense.
Understood.
So, since this is a first reading and next month would obviously be the second reading, you can't have a second reading till you get your first one right. Do we need to table the first reading, this portion of the first reading, until we get some of these answers?
So you actually could just make a mo, if you have a percent that you want to keep in mind, or if you just wanted to stay fifty percent, you could actually just motion it that way, so that way it would come back on the second reading changed to however you guys would like to see it and then you would approve it instead of having to wait another month for.
And does this fee, the, the alcohol reimbursement or permit fee, stop the water fee? Because it's all in one, right now they're presented together. So if we tabled the alcohol portion, does it automatically table the, the water fee?
No, as long as you specify that in your motion and split it up, we can, we can split up the ordinance for the second reading.
And then, so I have a question, Ben, what is the current base of water and sewer fee?
Oh, man.
Or do you know the percentage it's going, does it say what it's going up?
So that's gonna go by a, a fee, so I can tell you, let me look at this packet. So currently, I'll just give you at the tap size, if you have a three quarter inch, it's gonna go to forty-three dollars and fifty cents. So it was thirty-eight dollars and fifty cents.
That's, okay.
So it's gonna be, each size of the meter's gonna go up five dollars exact. And then same with wastewater, that's actually just set up in one charge and so it's going to twenty dollars and seventy-five cents.
And what was it?
That's math, let me think about that one, seventeen fifty?
Oh, okay, okay.
Yeah.
So seventeen fifty to twenty is the base rate on the sewer and then each one of the water meter sizes is going up roughly five dollars.
Correct.
So seven dollars and fifty cents total?
That would, for both rates would be the eight dollars and twenty-five cents.
Oh, okay.
Because your sewer is going up three twenty-five and then your water's going up five.
This is also, was talked about, I think, probably for everybody on this council was, was here, these rates were gonna go up and we postponed it.
Yeah, that, that's kind of where this comes from.
Project come to fruition.
We, when we took out the loan, we tried to bite the bullet for as long as possible and now when we're doing staff analysis on what everything's costing now, since costs are going up, this is what we came to, is to keep it as cheap as possible to keep solvency.
On residential clients or customers, do we have like a certain percentage that are delinquent on their payments currently?
I'm sure we do, I don't have that statistic in front of me. I can tell you usually if we go on cutoff of who's not paying their bills, it's about twenty a month probably is the rough average, which is, it's not too bad for over two thousand clients.
Do you happen to know how Rockdale compares to similar municipalities around the area in base fees?
I know we were pretty low, because when we were holding off those rate increases, everybody else is going up. I don't know what we're gonna be at now when we go up to this.
So I would personally like a little more information and understanding of why, on, switching back gears to the alcohol portion of it, I agree exactly what Dave said, let's don't go up just to be going up, if we don't need to be, because we're just strapping them, another, a business with another fee. Not saying that I'm against it, but I need more information before I would say that I'm for it, so. Y'all wanna motion?
Make it.
I agree.
This is motion, we're motioning just on the alcohol right now?
No, I'm gonna.
You're gonna motion?
I'm gonna loop it all in.
I feel like I, I also want to learn more about the water, I, already our water rate is, for me personally as a citizen, paying citizen, is, it's expensive, it's a lot of money. And eight dollars can mean, you know.
Eight dollars a year.
Yeah, it's just a lot, so I'd like to learn more about it and the reasoning behind it and see if maybe we could postpone it a little bit more, maybe when we get more of our water project completed. I don't think it's gonna sit well with the citizens, it will, it's not even gonna sit well with me, honestly. Nobody likes things going up, but I understand that things go up. Yes, thank you, Gerald. Thank you.
Thank you, ladies.
Thank y'all.
There's a lot goes into it, I mean, it's, you know, two big funds to the biggest in the city and we've got a lot going on. As far as what we pay people in Rockdale compared to the others, we're on the higher side, we're probably the highest in the wastewater base rate from everybody, that's why we're not going up as high with that, we're on the upper end of the water, but not the highest. And in a lot of the cities that are really having a hard time getting water have gone up significantly, so I don't think it puts us out of the ballpark with, with cities all over the state. The other thing is, when I came here and Barbara and I came in about the same time, we budgeted based on some of these projects being done by twenty twenty-three. And so we said, okay, we, we don't need to do as much right now, because when it's all done, it'll be less work for all of us. And that was dragged out until now, and so we have distribution, collections, systems and still some distribution, collections for wastewater, distribution, our water system, our treatment over at Texas Street still needs to be repaired and those are coming up, same thing at the wastewater plant, we had a meeting last week where we've got approval, basically, we gotta do permit to go in and do the wastewater treatment plant. That's gonna be bid probably in August and finish up in late twenty twenty-five. So these things that are still old are getting older and we have to have money to do it, so that's why we're putting money together now so that we can pay for these as we go forward, otherwise we fall so far behind, we can't do the repair or upkeep.
I get it, however, I believe it would be better received by our citizens if we had something to show that we, for example, maybe wait until the water projects are completed, the phase one and phase two, and then maybe increase it, that way the citizens feel, even though it's not really directly related, I think it would be better received. That's just my opinion.
And I don't know how Barbara was gonna present this tonight. I don't know how Barbara was gonna present this tonight, but this is not specifically to pay for the, those projects, this is to pay for the other things that need to be repaired.
Correct.
This is not, I mean, that, we found a sewer pipe the other day that we had a backup on and somebody years ago with A T and T was doing a fiber deal and they broke the pipe and they took an A T and T sign and coil it in the circle and put it over the top of it and was causing, I mean, we've got old, old sewer lines that need to be serviced and we, we just, we need to have the funds to be able to do that. If you want to put it off, that, that's.
No, I get it.
And again, I don't know how Barbara was gonna present this to you, I'm just telling you what I know about it.
Thank you, and I appreciate that, I was just.
I think to expound on what you're saying too, Esmeralda, I think, it's kind of like Lynn said, Councilman Perry said a while back, this would be received much easier, you know, we still have a million gallons of annual loss of water. This would be much easier received if there was construction, if we were doing, you know, and some of this loss was being, you know, rectified. I think it, this today, as of today, I think this will, I would probably motion to table it if you're not.
I have a question, with the water loss, someone refreshed my memory, did we, I know we received a report, did they find out where that water was going?
Yes, they made a presentation where they thought, thought that it was going and a lot of that is in one of the further agenda, further agenda items of replacing some of the bigger meters.
Yeah.
Is where they think some of that loss is going.
I, I don't disagree with you, that is probably my holy grail, is to find where that water's going. I mean, I, I scratched my head so many times walking in the middle of the night thing of work, is that water going? But what you need to remember is that's not huge dollars, okay? That's not water that we're losing revenue from, because we already have enough money, enough water to sell. What we lose is the cost to produce that water and it's not that large a number in the grand scheme of things. We're not talking about hundreds of thousands of dollars, we're talking about tens of thousands of dollars a year because of that lost water. So, you know, it may be eighty cents a, a thousand right now, you know, it's, it's a good chunk of money, but it's not huge dollars that we're talking about.
Gerald, if we, if we were to table this tonight and then that means we'd have to take it up again in January and then again in February, correct? Does that cause any issues?
I don't know, that would be a question here, historically, the city has always done this. I don't think financially it's an issue, we were talking a little bit, but it's always been done in January and you have to have a first and second reading and I don't know if it's ordinance driven, if you don't do it this January, you can't do it till the next January. So that's the only question I would have about that.
Any idea on that? No?
No, it wouldn't hurt it to do it, if you want to table it, you're not comfortable with it, it doesn't hurt anything.
I make a motion that we table item ten A.
I second that motion.
All in favor? Motion carries six zero. Okay, moving along to action items, eleven A, consider and take any necessary action on approving Vision Historic Preservation Foundation's request for recognition as a historically significant. for recognition as a historically significant property located at one forty West Cameron Avenue, Rockdale, Texas. Ms. Kira Beard?
I don't know if you guys have any questions, but just as a reminder, um, uh, the city worked through creating the Historic Preservation Board in order to develop a program, uh, to help, uh, not only nonprofits like ours, but even private property owners in restoring our historic district, and, uh, there's a lot of ways that we can grow this program. But, uh, one of the, uh, initiatives was also that, uh, we, uh, Vision Historic Preservation Foundation has been selected as one of ten finalists for a Texas Historic Foundation grant, which I have, uh, submitted our second stage of the grant that was due December fourth, and we have submitted a letter that, uh, you know, had been passed by Planning and Zone, or the Pre- Historic Preservation Board at the Planning and Zoning Committee meeting, uh, to be recommended to the council to recognize, uh, the eighteen ninety-five site as a, uh, historically significant, um, local landmark designation, uh, so that we, that was one of the qualifying categories that we needed for the grant as well. So, um, if you guys are able to, uh, adopt the recommendation that, uh, the, the board has made, then we'll be able to submit that information to Texas Historical Foundation for our final, um, piece that we need for that grant.
This one forty West Cam, that's?
That's the old City Hall building. Yeah.
I think it's great, and I'm glad that you're doing all the legwork to get all this done, cause it looks great so far, and I'm really excited about it. So I'll, I'd like to go ahead and move that we approve line, item eleven A as, as read.
Did Lynn, did you have anything?
I'm sorry.
I don't think it has any financial impact to the city, is what, what Barbara said. It's just a matter of.
It's just us recognizing them. Yeah, recognizing them, and that can help you out. I don't see why we wouldn't do it.
I'll second the motion. If nobody has anything else?
All in favor? Motion carries six zero.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. It looks great.
Eleven B, consider and take any necessary action on the recommendation to the city council regarding a preliminary plat submitted by DF Enterprises LLC for property known as property ID two four three eight two, Mylum County, Texas, into twelve lots.
This is also known as the Cypress Trail Plat. Um, you may wanna kill the lights, Herbie. So eight of them, we don't have any problems with. Eight of the lots, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, we don't have any problems with. This lot, this lot, this lot, and this lot are technically landlocked. They're going to give a permanent.
Joint access.
Permanent joint access fifty foot wide, this land here. Need a variance on that, because you can't have a lot that's only fifty foot lot wide.
Fifty or twenty-five on Cypress?
It's twenty-five and twenty-five, twenty-five and twenty-five technically. It's fifty foot from Cypress up to those lots. That's a new one, that's a new one for us. They're called flag lots. And the part that's non-conforming is the fifty, is the twenty-five foot per lot, or fifty foot lot. That's called a lot size in there. That's non-conforming. It's basically a driveway.
So that easement looking thing, uh, that you're, you were highlighting there, that's actually gonna be a lot now?
It is actually considered, it's deeded, these two properties get this, these two properties get this. Otherwise, these four are landlocked.
And so this isn't in the city limits, but it's a part of the ETJ.
So it's a ETJ, and the other concern I think we had in there that you should see is over water. We had the, uh, lawyer for the developer.
No, that was the, um, surveyor.
Surveyor. And we had a little problem, us ourselves, about water access in case of fighting fire. What you have now is you've gone from fairly large acreage type lots that were rural. Most of them had their own water. In case you had a fire, you could go out and you could draft water off a stock tank and what have you. Now you're going into a higher density residential type setting. This is served by, uh, Southwest Mylum, and they were telling the developer that they could not provide firefighting, uh, water. Firefighting water is where you have a large enough hydrant and enough pressure and enough water to support a fire hydrant. But they can supply water for a truck to fill, to supply to, it's called a tanker truck, to supply to the fire trucks. Did you wanna give your recommendation on that?
So.
I think it's in there with your packet. I think his recommendation, the fire marshal's recommendation and ours, ours was just get us some water down here. The only other problem that we saw with that is cause there's only one way into this neighborhood up here, and it goes over the railroad tracks. So we could have a little bit of a problem. That, that was just trying to make us feel better about having a higher density of homes in here in some way to suppress fire. So, so the two issues that you should have there, I, I'll get to you, just like, two issues you should have there, you should, uh, deal with whether you're gonna allow these flag lots, and then, uh, recommendations on fire suppression. Right? And it in your packet? Am I on the wrong page here?
No, it's, it's in there.
The looks you're giving me is like, oh, man, I'm on the wrong item here? What, what happened?
I thought the recommendation was for fire hydrants at X amount of feet, though, is what fire department asked for. That's not what I'm hearing now. What I'm hearing now is a, is a place to fill up a pumper truck? Or a tanker truck? Cause one, we don't even own a tanker truck.
Big enough for, for that, for fighting fire like that, or for grass fire?
Okay.
So they were giving us some pricing, and they were kinda dragging our feet, because it would require having, uh, a larger line brought in. Uh, Cypress Trail and that goes back up here and makes a right-hand corner. And I don't know exactly where they're having to pick up to put in a little bit larger line. Uh, but it was gonna be an additional cost to like sixty thousand dollars. But sixty thousand dollars divided by twelve lots only is about a five thousand dollar per lot increase for fire suppression. I don't know where we were, we were with that. Our recommendations are what you saw before you.
So, how much, how much say-so do we have? And I, I get all this inside the city limits and ETJ, what we have the right to tell them to do or not to do. Uh, it seemed like we went through this on, on the Derek Caffey project. Uh, we're making recommendations on something that we don't have any jurisdiction over.
That's, that's, so far that's true.
That was my next question after this. Blaine, about like, why are we worried about this if it's not inside city limits?
The only reason we would be worried about that is if we were to acquire that.
Down the road.
Down the road, say, all those twelve neighbors decide they want city services, and they, we can annex, but they can request to be annexed. If we do that, then it's gonna be on us for all the water and anything that we're seeing that we not meeting our.
Bring it up to snuff to annex.
Code, yeah.
We couldn't make it to where, hey, we'll do that if y'all do this, and do something like that. So, yeah, you wanna.
Y'all are city council, you can do what you can do. I'm just planning and zoning.
Let me add to this, just for clarification purposes. The reason we do the ETJ is actually the county has asked us to take that on in our local agreement. So it really didn't have anything to do with annexation purposes. It is just strictly, they don't wanna handle the ETJ, so they've asked the city many years ago to do that, and so we have a portion in our code on what our regulation requirements are. And so fire suppression is one of those that we actually do require. Southwest Mylum can't provide it in this area, so they're asking for a variance, as well as the lot widths are not wide enough, so they have to get a variance. You have the authority to regulate it to where you don't approve it, because you don't wanna grant the variance, and you would ask them to redraw it up, or you would approve it with the variance and let it go forward to where they would put in the infrastructure, and then it would be filed after their water is in, cause the city will hold it until Southwest Mylum's put their water in, so those lots can go vertical.
So, in, in our, what we have the ability to say you can and can't do, um, if, if we say that they have to do this, they can turn right around, since they're not in the city limits, and put in a trailer park, and do whatever they want right there, once we give them these, this, this, this variance, and we, if they meet our criteria for this, then they're on their own, they can do whatever they want, because they're no longer under our jurisdiction.
I really wish there was a representative here from their side to discuss this with you. Uh, I.
But you are correct.
But you are correct from our point of view.
We, uh, cannot require them to put in deed restrictions. We can't require them to meet city zoning requirements, cause there is no zoning outside of the ETJ. I mean, which is strictly a plating action from the city standpoint. That's all we can regulate.
Right, Caffey.
I mean.
I'm onto this.
They're not here, which we've said in the past, if you want something from the city, you need to come here and answer some questions. It looks to me like they're trying to get out of building a road right down the middle and not developing. They wanna go around it. That's just my opinion, cause they're not here to answer that. If you wanna develop it, build a road. Divide it up.
All I can do is stand here and smile, because that's our concerns. I'm telling you, yeah. Cause I asked the man, what if Joe Bob's pickup trucks quits right here in the middle of this right here, and Mary Jane can't get around it? Who's gonna be in charge of towing that off and everything? So I had some questions along those lines. I really wish they were here to answer them for you. So there's some concerns on those flag lots.
Here's my question. It looks like the recommendation is for, from planning and zoning is for us to approve it. Is that correct? Even though you have reservations?
I don't have the power in the ETJ. I, there's not enough there for me to say absolutely no, if you understand what I'm saying.
I also say, uh, share the same concern with, uh, Councilman Perry. As we grow, we may, they may want to be part of the city, and then we don't know what we're, if we can, if we can have a say-so now, it'd be best to just handle it now.
And, and don't feel bad. We bogged down on this for a while, didn't we?
Yeah.
Councilmen Starins.
Well, it's always, we appreciate everything y'all have done.
Yeah, yeah, for sure.
I think this personally, one, one person out of six, there's two options. We can, you know, everybody vote. If it's no, it goes away, or we can say, shelve it till next month, and come in and answer some questions. That's just.
And this is neither here nor, here nor there, is, it's just FYI. They have cleared all the lots, they've run electrical and, and stuff out there. So they're sitting on go, uh, which is not usual. A lot of times they just come in with these great plans, and all they have are flags on the ground, but they've actually made some motion on it, so.
How big are those lots?
So each lot's an acre, but I just wanna remind the council, when it comes to plats, staff's hands are really tied, because the state regulates it. And so state regulation requirements is we have thirty days to approve this, or not approve it, subject to conditions. And you have to let them know what those conditions are, so that way they go fix their plat, and then it gets approved. We really can't just say no to it, cause it really is a ministerial action, where if it's done appropriately, it has to be approved or approved subject to a condition. And so that's what you guys are looking at. And that we really don't have any control over the deed restrictions, which is a concern, but it's not a requirement we could put on the plat. And we really can't table it, because if we table it, the thirty days will pass, and it's approved as is, and we don't have a say in it anymore. The state's really tied our hands on what.
We couldn't say, let's talk about it next month. We're saying, we could vote it no right now.
What are you voting no or yes to? I, I still don't understand why I'm voting no or yes.
What's the plan? What's the developer's plan? Do they have a plan?
So the plan for the developers to develop each lot with a home on it. What that home looks like, couldn't tell you. Each lot's gonna have a septic on it, and then they will pull from Southwest Mylum water. But what you're looking at is two variance requests from the way they did the plat, to the flag lots, and to the fire suppression. And so we just have to make a motion on it, or it gets approved if we table it.
It is, it's approved by default.
But the, the.
No, no action.
It goes through.
It, it goes through.
Fire suppression is not a variance, though, right?
It would be, because our code requires it, and so if they're not gonna provide it, they're, they have to ask in a letter, which is in your packet, for that variance request. So they're, they're specifically asking you not to provide it. And so from fire recommendation, we were installed two hydrants, and they would just fill up at those hydrants. They won't use it to actually do fire suppression, they'll just fill up their truck.
So are those identified on the, on the plat? Those are the two locations that?
They didn't identify it on the plat, cause they received the comment after the plat was submitted. But when they go with the plat, part of the recreation project, process, they have to have their infrastructure in and fire hydrants. We will not record the plat and make those lots official until the city and Southwest Mylum's accepted our hydrants, and then they put in their water lines.
So let me ask you this, and y'all might already covered it, sorry. So the hy- hydrants are at the city's cost?
No, developer thing for all of it.
So what cost is at the city's of any? No cost at all? Cause we're not selling them the water, we know that.
That's.
Yeah. We, we really are just in this for the plating portion, cause of the interlocal agreement. Um, there's no, we're not paying any money to help the developer, and they're only paying us the plat processing fee to get it filed for them after the fact. So, uh, that's really all we're in for, is just to get this recorded for them, if you guys approve it, and to whichever conditions you approve it with.
Yeah. Now, now you know what it's like to be up against the wall. That's the way we were. It's like, we bogged down on this, but if we don't take, if we didn't take any action, it would pass anyway, so.
So, we're, we're, we're making a recommendation that they follow the, uh, that they put in the hydrants and firefighting.
Yeah, they can at least.
Devices for the recommendation.
Yep.
They'll have, uh, we, we talked with the rep that was here, and, and, uh, non-pressurized hydrant is a black colored hydrant. It's called a free flow or low flow hydrant. You can't draft off of it. You can fill your truck with whatever pressure's there, but you can't suck on it. You can't draft on it.
The line's not big enough for, and you run into a lot of stuff with online. And you have like a little clutch valve, uh, we can hook on a dash to fill up, but it's only a two-inch line. Uh, this will be off the six-inch line, so we fill the truck up with that. And being it's in that area, it's where you have to cross the railroad track, we made a fire in there, we can get our tanker truck down there, but then once it's down there, if the train comes by, we need to go get more water. We can't cross the tracks until the train, and, and it's causing problems that way.
Thanks, Doug.
Seems like a liability issue, like, if we approve this, does this make us liable?
I knew y'all would enjoy that one, boys.
That's too much.
Credit Union, go over the railroad tracks back that way.
What you got, man?
Just here to field any questions, cause I know it's a hot topic. Our planning commission had some fun with this one, but, um, we really are just kinda hands tied with the state on what we can and can't do at plats. I just wanna remind everybody of that.
I, I feel the same way that we, I felt on the Derek Caffey one a couple meetings back. This is coming to us, but we have, really, why is it coming to us? We don't have any say-so in it anyway. We, what, we, there's nothing we can or can't do. I mean, we can say, no, we don't agree to it, and then they agree, and they still do it.
Yeah.
Um, right?
So you have more power than you think. I mean, you can say no, but you would, so you could say you don't want this, but it has to be conditioned. So you can't just say flat out, no, you can't do this. What you can say is it's approved, subject to, and then you fill in the blank of what you want to what we can do. So on the ETJ, it's really all about the land. So it's gonna be about lot size, it's gonna be about fire suppression, it's gonna be about the access to each lot.
Okay, let me ask. What does, right now, we're at fifty feet, twenty-five and twenty-five. What do we have to get to and not be asking for a variance? What do they have to get to to not be asking for a variance on the, on that width, lot width?
That would be seventy feet.
Make them lose seventy.
Each, each lot would have to be a seventy-foot wide lot minimum to meet city code.
So thirty-five and thirty-five from each owner, from?
It would be for each, because those lots, each portion would have to be seventy feet, cause that's their frontage on the road, so that's the lot width. So right now.
That's what I'm saying, that's the road.
Yeah.
So I'm saying, they can make a road.
So, right now, they're significantly short on what our code is asking for on lot width. Because they're only, they only have twenty-five on each lot, so if you take each flag. It looks like fifty feet on the ground, but lot six has twenty-five foot frontage, lot seven has twenty-five foot frontage. So lot six really only owns a portion of twenty-five feet, lot seven owns their twenty-five foot portion to get to their house in the back.
So, do I have the power to say no? You come down the middle, left to right, uh, e- east to west, instead of north to south, on this drawing that I'm looking at here, with a road? Do we have the authority to say that?
I wouldn't necessarily say we can tell them exactly what we wanna do, but you can't say no to their variance requests and require them to come in with seventy foot lots. And then they will create a plan.
Wouldn't they make that a non-conforming lot?
Well, yeah, yeah, but, um, what you can't say is no, cause there is variance requests apply with this one, so variances don't have to be approved. You actually have the authority to say no to that, so if you did, the developer would know they're coming in with a seventy foot lot. You're gonna see a completely different plan from this, because the way it is right now, they have four lots, if you take away those twenty-five foots for each, then you have landlocked lots and they just gotta go. So you'll be looking at a significantly different document. So we can't, short answer, we can't tell them to put a road in, but what you can't tell them is tell them, no, the variance requests come back with seventy foot lots, and then we would pass that on to the developer to do.
Y'all feel the same? Go ahead, four, it'll.
And attend the meeting, thank you for questions.
There won't be another one. I'll make a motion that we deny the variance for the lot size and stick with our seventy foot. Or seventy-five foot, uh, lot minimum size as well. And a, and upon that, approve the plat as well as including the fire suppression. Uh, hydrants that have been recommended by the fire marshal.
Good job.
I'll second that motion.
All in favor? Motion carries six zero. Day we get it, yeah, we're on that one.
That's minimal.
Eleven C, consider and take any necessary action on approving the capital improvement program. CIP for FY twenty-three, twenty-four.
So this is the, you'll have a list in your packet of what is proposed, and then you'll see later on in the meeting if this is approved. Some different projects are up and coming with the cost of those.
I I maybe became confused as I was looking over this, the items that are in color. Are we considering all of them, some of them?
So some of the items in color appear to be on your agenda tonight, so, do you have an answer to that, Roxanne, what's the color theory behind that?
As far as I understand, those projects are future projects that need to be considered, no?
Yeah, I don't think the airport runway is something we've talked about in that detail, how would Gerald?
The discussion we've had over the course of the last year or so of our capital improvement projects. And the money that we got from the cornerstone land sale has been set up as a, uh, capital improvement project fund. And we have some expenditures that we want to do over the next twelve months. And what the the whole colored area there is, is the things that we have put high priorities on over the next three to six years.
Yeah.
That's where we think, but there's about five projects on there that we think need to be done in the next twelve months. Three of them, uh, two of them are on your, given tonight, and if you have questions about either of the other ones, I'd be glad to go over them with you.
Is it the top, top five, I looked at this earlier and I, here it is. Yeah, but which which five?
Well, one's the meters, one's the chlorine and.
City pool chlorine, large meter, PD security.
Yeah, it's all stuff we're getting to.
Yeah, several of those are, um, items that are up and coming.
Not all of them, well, we're on the two of them.
No, it's just a, a few that they would like to get done in the next twelve months. Yeah. Runway, two million, you know. We have to approve this.
And where do these, Gerald, where do these numbers, are these guestimates on y'all's? I know, like, the meters and the chlorine, y'all have got pricing already on those, but like Red Bud, is that? Is that something that we put together, or somebody's given us a number?
From A-one paving, or Alpha one paving out of Austin.
Okay.
Uh, that's a concrete replacement, we got also a, uh, asphalt cost, but they did not recommend putting asphalt into Red Bud, so that's an actual cost. Now, it's a current cost, if we put it off till a year from now, it's not gonna stay to that number, but, uh, that's a fixed cost. And, uh, disinfection for the pool, that's a fixed cost. And so we're discount from what we were given last summer, if we, but we have to place that order by the end of December to get that price. Oh, excuse me, I don't have my list here, probably.
Or, I guess my question is, any of the five that we're talking about, uh, stuff that we don't have a firm number, that we feel comfortable that. We have enough money in there?
The large meter replacement, it's about forty thousand dollars, that's a thick, uh, hard number for the meters we have to buy. I said, uh, about ten thousand for parts and pieces, and we were gonna put them in, so that's a little bit of an estimate there, but not, not very much. The one that is the most off, um, is the PD, security camera, I didn't have that information when we put this together last Friday morning. And I got it late Friday afternoon, and that's gonna be about a hundred and eighty thousand dollars. So what would have to happen is, and the PD's, uh, security system is unsupported now. And, uh, if it fails right now, there is nobody to fix it, so that's why it's higher on the priority list. And, you know, just my personal opinion is that we would put off the camera system for the rest, uh, security for the rest of it, as long as we can meet TCQ and EPA demands. And put that money towards the PD's program, and I believe it was, uh, eighty-six thousand dollars in. Uh, equipment, and because they're on, not only doing cameras, but also doing, uh, security locks and opening, closing doors and remotely. Uh, and then about right at a hundred thousand, they said not to exceed two hundred, but the number that I had was about a hundred, right at a hundred and ninety thousand dollars, just the police department, but with the new security complete change out.
How old is our police department? I don't know, this just bothers me, the the, two thousand and eighteen.
Is that a break room?
No, that was put together by a guy named Duncan, and I don't even know with none of his company, but he died last year. And, uh, it was just him and his son or his wife, and he's gone, and there is no support for it anymore.
No, he's saying, he's.
Is there, there's not a break room?
I'm sorry.
There's not a break room in the police department?
I'm sorry, I apologize.
Oh, in that break room?
My hearing, I'm just not laughing.
Now, this covers cameras, the designer did not include a camera in our inventory.
Okay.
You think that'd be a hotspot breakdown? Um, but the the system is not supported anymore, we don't have anybody who can fix it now if it goes down. So our cameras are tied in directly to our management, they're locked, so that's the issue.
And it's, it's also was putting during the building of it, so there's a lot of it in concrete that, rather than putting it in conduit, there's no way to. Change it out, makes it a lot more difficult, so there was a cost added to that.
So a system that's.
unsupported.
Six years old?
Yeah.
Is now unsupported.
And and any new system, I guess, it, I'm assuming there are companies and businesses that we can count on five years, ten years, fifteen years out, that they're gonna still be able to be supporting us.
Yes, this, uh, Verkata is the company that we're looking at, we talked to, um, AI Solutions, uh, they did not come back with a quote. I think, uh, Univista has got somebody for us looking into it for a secondary, uh, another quote, a third quote. But, uh, Verkata is a worldwide corp, uh, uh, corporation, and, um, they've Caldwell Schools, Caldwell Police Station. There are a lot of places around this area where they have systems in place.
So we've only got, either way, this would have to go back out to bid, cause we only have one number, uh, we'd have to put out an RFP for for this?
Um.
A hundred and eighty thousand dollars, uh.
Again, I'm, I can't tell you that for sure, uh, I, this, well, I can tell you that they have a buy board company that they use as, or process that they use called tips. And the city has not used it, it would have to be approved by, uh, city council or the city manager or financial, I'm not sure how. Uh, like, we have the Texas Buy Board, we can buy from that, if it's, uh, um, if we get a buy board contract number and we get a rebate. I'm not sure about tips, though, but if the tips was not, um. Was not approved, there'd have to be something done, but just the cost of them doing all this, uh, pre-engineering and design is quite a bit that they're putting into it right now. And I think that's probably why, um, AI didn't come back, they didn't, they they wanted us to give them all the information and let them give us, they didn't come out here at all to to look at everything. Verkata's been out here on at least four occasions to to look at what we have and to give us a recommendation.
So is tonight's motion to, uh, can agree to move forward on this process, it's not necessarily pulling the trigger to spend.
Four hundred and eighty dollars.
Yeah, four hundred and eighty, four hundred and five hundred thousand dollars.
Basically, the first four, Lynn.
What's that?
Basically, the first four, and that, that keeps us within, um, the money that's currently in the, in the fund.
But two of them come up later as agenda items, but two of them don't, so that's why I'm curious, how do the other two move forward off of this if if the first two aren't? Does that make sense, does my question make sense?
Um.
Two, the the meters and the, and the pool come up as separate agenda items, but if they're lumped into this, why are they separate agenda items?
Well, I can't answer that, except those were the ones that I was asked to put in that agenda item for, but, uh, Jim, go ahead.
Guys, the CIP is kind of like a budget, it's just.
That's what I thought, it's it's.
So, uh, approving the actual expenditure, it would be a separate.
Separate agenda, okay.
Thank you, Jim. Okay, thank you.
We're, we're, we're saying move forward with the thought process, it'll come back when it's an official award.
Right, and and those are the two, um. Again, the AMI, we have the number on that already, so probably next month we'll come back with that and make a recommendation to to forward. Uh, the only thing on that we're waiting for is a, uh, uh, tower to be put up by cornerstone to put one of our repeaters on, and then it's, it's a done deal. So all we have to do is get the approval, and then the security camera, again, if he was here, he could go over it in more depth, but, uh, okay, that's what's for.
Thank you, Gerald, okay, I'm gonna make a motion that we approve the CIP for the fiscal year two thousand twenty-three slash two thousand twenty-four.
I'll second that.
All in favor? Motion carries six zero. Eleven D, consider and take any necessary action on updating the city pool disinfection system.
And we have a, uh, it's not a bad system, but it's, but we're not getting support for it from the company, uh, uh, that supplies us the bleach. And also, uh, liquid bleach has a tendency to, uh, eat away at the surface of the ti, of the new pool surface we put in year before last. And so, uh, we also have a problem with our lifeguards coming from YMCA and doing it properly. So what we're wanting to putting there is a pelletized, uh, disinfection system in there, we'll take what we have out, put a new in. It's the same system that almost every YMCA in Central Texas use, so all these, um, uh, lifeguards will be exposed to it. And also the management will have knowledge of it and be able to come over here, because in the past, they had very little expertise in that, and it caused a lot of trouble. And, uh, so the cost to replace that is eighteen thousand two hundred dollars.
Could have built a new pool by now, all we've put into that pool over the past two years, I mean, we could have built Kalahari over there.
No way. Uh, it seems like it's a necessity to me, so I'd like to go ahead and, uh, move to approve light item eleven D as red.
I'll second.
All in favor? Motion carries six zero. Eleven E, consider and take any necessary action on project management for two thousand twenty-three, twenty-four, text dot ramp grant work.
Uh, we don't have it in writing, but, uh, text stock has been crazy this year, but we're getting a hundred thousand dollars of text stock money for, uh, ramp grant. And we, uh, add to that eleven thousand one hundred and eleven dollars. And, um, we have already bought the runway lights that meet FAA re, uh, regulations. And, uh, what we wanna do is we wanna hire, uh, Daryl Phillips, uh, his company, it's just him. And he will, uh, oversee this, he's worked in airports all over the state, and he will write the project up, get the quotes for us based on city requirements, just like he did for the, um, fuel system that that we put in. And we're just asking for you to approve the, uh, an agreement with him not to exceed eleven thousand one hundred dollars, I believe that's what is put in there, uh, to oversee that project. And additionally, he would also include with that the secondary part, depending on how much money's left after we put the the lights in, to start on a, um, ramp. Ramp up, engine ramp up, uh, at the south end of the runway for the planes to pull off, ramp up their engines, and then get onto the runway. Right now, they have to sit on the runway to do that, so that's what this is requesting.
So the eleven thousand is is our piece to the grant, to match the grant, and we're gonna use our eleven thousand to hire Daryl or whoever.
Right, that's correct.
What's the total, uh, project gonna cost?
I'm sorry?
The total, what's the total gonna cost?
The total was a hundred thousand from the state and a hu, and and eleven thousand one hundred and eleven dollars that we match. Uh, but we don't have this specific cost of the installation of the lights yet, because he'll write it up, this is what we wanna do, then we'll put it out for bid. And then we'll get the bids and choose the, and we'll bring it back to you to to approve the bid when it comes in.
With this, this, this grant, we have money in our budget as well for the, uh, airport. So you take that money, plus this money, and that's the money that the airport board has to spend out at the.
Correct.
Make a motion that we approve.
Yeah.
Make a motion, we approve the item as red. I'll second it.
All in favor? Motion carries six zero. Eleven F, consider and take any necessary action on approving large water meter replacement and funding.
This is what we talked about earlier, it's forty thousand dollars approximately for the meters. Uh, we're gonna get Allegro, uh, AMI meters that will be, be able to be read from our tower and go to the cloud. Once we put the AMI system in, hopefully, early next year, and, um. But we have quite a few larger meters that are either inaccurate or not operational at all, and we would like to fix those using CIP money.
Is the, I saw a meter quantity in in some of the backup, and I don't remember where I saw it.
I think it's fourteen or fifteen.
This says sixteen are recommended.
Fifteen, yeah.
So is that how many we're gonna replace if we approve it?
We're gonna replace all of those meters.
That's not all the large meters, though, that's.
Uh, it's most of them, we don't, for a city this size, we don't have a lot of large meters. Not a lot of industry, not a lot of big concern, uh, water users, and, uh, that's a big portion of what we have. Now, there are a lot of one inch meters, an inch and a half meters, that they recommended that we change, that we haven't done that yet, but we'll do that as we change over. Our old, uh, master meters to the new Allegro meters that Master Meter produces. These are, these are the hi- high water use accounts that, uh, a lot of them aren't reading anything.
Where that water's going.
Yeah, well, some of it is, I can promise you that, I don't know how much, but some of it is.
Okay. Do we have any remedial work that we're gonna owe, once we tear up? Is is any of this in concrete, any of these meters in, uh, encased with sidewalks and everything else?
I think most of the bigger ones are in, uh, vaults, and, you know, we may have to do some of the work, uh, in the summertime for the schools or at spring break and get it scheduled. Uh, we're gonna try to do it all ourselves, uh, we're, we're down, leaks are down, not to zero yet, they were down zero.
Harold, don't ever say hush.
Yeah, I know, but, uh, they, uh, uh, we're, we're, we're planning on doing this ourselves, I don't think we're gonna tear up much.
I'll make a motion that we approve item line F for the water, uh, meter replacement.
I'll second it. All in favor? Motion carries six zero. Eleven G, consider and take any necessary action on adopting the FY twenty twenty-three Rockdale MDD budget amendments.
That was a typo, it's actually.
That was a typo. It's actually the twenty twenty-four budget, not the twenty twenty-three budget. I don't know if I sent you twenty three.
For the record.
For the record.
Twenty twenty-four.
It is twenty twenty-four. So um, what, what's necessitated us needing to come to you three, not even three months into our new budget year to ask for a budget amendment? Well, we bought some property. Uh, y'all may have uh, seen or heard that uh, the MDD purchased the uh, about a third of an acre of uh, piece of property on, yes, that one, that one, um, over there. And um, we did not budget for that. That was an opportunity that came up. We needed to move fast on it. And so we, we did it. And so now we are asking for a budget amendment.
What are y'all's plans with it?
Don't know yet. Ideally, it's, at first we're gonna demo it.
You're gonna demo it.
Clean it up and see where we go from there. If we can sell it or.
Whataburger.
Do I?
Yeah.
Whataburger, yeah, that'd be great.
Well, I, I, I'll tell you, I've, I've got some people saying, why is the MDD buying property, this, that and the other? And I, and I see where they're coming from, especially like that because it's, it's not like it's gonna tie to a much bigger piece of property that you're fixing to buy and developing. So I would say that we need to be very careful in that and that we're flipping it, in my opinion, my opinion only, that uh, we're cleaning these lots up, flipping them, putting them back on the tax roll. Um, because when you own it, we get nothing from it.
Right. No, no, the, the idea is to either try to assemble a lot, this with the larger piece of land. Cause you have the two adjoining properties that are currently for sale. And they, if it could all be bought in one big bulk, that's a bigger project that would have a lot more impact for the city. Uh, as opposed to us just selling our, not even a third of an acre and Judy selling her less than that and whatever.
So as long as we're diligently trying to get it back onto the tax roll uh, and have a plan of some sort.
And cleaning it up.
Well, I see what you're saying. I, I agree with what you're saying. However, I appreciate that it's a huge eyesore, especially right on our highway. So I appreciate that he's taking it off the market and gonna clean it up.
Right.
Yeah.
Could you define diligently? How, how, how long is it gonna sit until it's back on the tax rolls?
Well, we have another year until uh, it gets um, back on taxes. Yeah, sorry.
Um. I, I agree with the reasoning and the cleanup. I'm all for that. But I'm looking at an actual budget for last year that was five hundred and twenty-two thousand dollars. And, and we've gone over almost a hundred and twenty thousand dollars. I don't know if that's healthy.
And how, how did it, did this, did this property? Did it come onto the market? Uh, how did?
We approached the uh, property owner to ask if we could purchase it. That was a, something that the board wanted to do, was try to be a little more proactive about buying property, cleaning it up, trying to reactivate the property and get something that's going to generate taxes on there. That was one of the option, or ideas that the board said and we, I asked an agent to extend the offer and things just happened very fast on that.
So I'm gonna, uh, because I've, I've gotten a little pushback on this. Um, similar uh, thought process was on the office down there that we're gonna buy. The MDD was gonna buy an office, fix it up, put it on the market, buy an old and another collated building, fix it up, put it on the market. And that hasn't happened for whatever. I don't know what the reasoning is. But when it was brought to me, here we go again is what uh, MDD is gonna do something and then they didn't do it. So how do I, I, I need to be able to answer these people.
So um, obviously I wasn't here whenever they said they were going to do that. Uh, of the buy building, flip and repeat. Um, the board has definitely expressed that that is something that they would be open to considering. And they, they bought the building that we're in. I don't know, for whatever reason, they never sold it or whatever. Um, but we have talked with the board about, okay, well, what if we bought this building and tried to fix it up? And then moved and flipped it or whatever. And what we're running into is, and I know all of y'all are aware of this, is that the, that model works when the initial purchase price of the next building is cheap or cheaper. Well, now we know real estate, especially in downtown, can be pretty pricey, even for distressed properties. Uh, not to name any names. And now the renovation costs are a lot higher than they have been. So that model of buy building, move in there, fix it up a little bit, sell it and repeat, kind of might, might have worked a while back ago, but now the economics of it don't really work. But the board kind of thinking in that same mindset of try to buy something, clean it up and uh, put something else on there that will generate some taxes. We, they thought, well, let's try this with a different piece of property that really needs to be cleaned up.
I have a concern though. And I, and I'm, I, I like all the work that Jim does and, 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 but we do have private citizens who are purchasing properties and renovating them first class. And I don't know, was that opportunity, I, I don't know why the MDD would get into, if there's residential places, we, I, I know of people that would maybe do that and have the project done a lot quicker.
And have the capital to.
That's right.
Turn it quicker.
Didn't it have it for something?
That one, no.
No.
That's the one next door.
I see what you're saying.
One next door does.
This one would never hit the market.
Gotcha.
From what, from what I understand.
Is that the concern you're expressing?
Yeah, I just, I, I know that.
We weren't given, that we didn't give the citizens an opportunity to purchase it.
Well, I'll say this. I represented somebody trying to buy it and it was no easy task dealing with that seller. Communicating with them. So it wasn't real easy to do. I'm surprised. I'm happy they did it. I communicated with knocking on a door or two or three and whatever scurried out. I would leave a message for the owner and he would go down later and write notes on a paper sack at our store.
I still got letters at my front door.
Yeah, and I'm saying, so that was, and it never happened because, and that went on for weeks and more months and never got anywhere. So I, I tried that with an individual trying to buy that property and it was, it never went anywhere.
And if somebody wants to buy this property from us, please call me.
So now you have an opportunity to sell it.
Absolutely.
Thank you for going through all that.
Yeah.
With the maybe difficult seller.
And apparently there's um, some underground tanks uh, underneath the, the, or in the property there from the old gas station. So sometimes, sometimes whenever um, an individual or a company sees that, they run away. Cause that's just way too much risk. You just don't know, once you start digging, what you're gonna run into.
But I think the state has a fund for that.
The public sec, sometimes, sometimes uh, the public sector can take on that risk because our profit motive might be a little bit different.
But I believe the state has a fund for that that helps out with uh, underground storage facilities.
Free municipalities that end up in there.
Whoever.
I think it was great work. Thanks for doing that.
I'm gonna make a motion that the council adopt the proposed budget, budget amendment.
I'll second.
All in favor? Motion carries six.
Thank you, Jim.
Thank y'all.
Good work, Jen.
Eleven. Eleven H, consider and take any necessary action on planning and zoning commission appointments.
We're, hold on, we're eleven H.
It's uh, eight fifty-five or fifty-four.
So uh, no, we tabled it last, last month because I, me, uh, I'm the one that, that pushed for it. Because I, I am very against me putting somebody on a board that I know nothing about. Um, and I feel that way last month, I feel it today. Um, I don't know how the, how it's written, how the, our chapter is written such that we as a council have to appoint people for boards and committees. And that's wrong. I feel like the sitting committee should have some say so in who's getting dumped on their board. Um, and I, I don't mean dumped on the board negatively towards any of the candidates. I'm saying me not knowing what the best person for that board might be, what that board really needs. If they need a strong vocal person or if they, if they've already got two strong vocal persons, they probably don't need a third strong vocal person. They need somebody that's gonna sit back and uh, take stuff in and, and that sort of thing. And I have no idea what the dynamics of that board is. So I don't feel comfortable saying, here, Ms. O'Brien, you get on that board. Or here, Brayden Wallace, you get on that board, when maybe that, one of them serves that board better than the other one. And we don't know that. And so that's my two cents. I would like, if it's possible, for the advertisement to go out and next month PNZ have their top recommendations, just like we did with the judge. Um, and, and tell us why that candidate is needed, why they're the best person to fit that board.
No, I agree with you. That, that could go on all boards though. It could go.
I, I think it should.
Probably should.
It probably should.
I don't know if, if our charter allows for that though.
And I don't think, in you saying that, you're, we're trying to kick the can down the road. I think what we're doing is really making a more educated and informed decision and allowing more people to be exposed. Cause I thought, I was under the impression that this was gonna be advertised and be put on the radio to open up to more candidates.
And Ms. O'Brien, you're the only one in here. This is not a dig or at all against you, so please don't, or Brayden, don't take it that way. It's a, it's a mere, I think the process is broke um, to some degree.
No, that makes sense. I mean, it does. Uh, uh, I think the board should have a, a definite voice in who they think needs to be on there.
So.
Or any board except, I think I would request a board.
Is anybody against tabling it or making a motion, if I need to make a motion, that comes back and, and gives them, gives, if, if that's possible for that to be the instruction given to the.
PNZ.
PNZ prior to next month's.
I would second that motion if you make it.
Does that need, do you know if that needs to be a motion or just, do we need to table this and then give that instruction?
I mean, it, it can be tabled. I mean, we've heard, we hear you. I mean, we can do that.
But like I said, I, I mean, I think that should be something then if we're gonna do it on one board, it should be on all boards.
Everybody.
If we can do that, if it's in the bylaws or however it's.
If the charter lets it.
Most boards and I, we may need to fact check what I'm about to say, the dumb by ordinance. So it's not a charter issue. If that's like a standard or process that you want to implement, I don't think it'll be an issue. But I'll have to study that because I don't know that off the top of my head. But if you want to go ahead and just table it and have staff do that.
We table this and give the instruction to, to go out, advertise and come back with a recommendation from the PNZ board, if that is allowed.
Second, if I could add to that, if, I agree with all of that. But I would also like the board to examine themselves and their current uh, members to make sure that for the most part, everybody is represented in addition to looking for other candidates. To make sure it's diversified.
But and, and at the same time, recognize that um, people aren't beating down the doors to get on these.
Okay, so there's where I was gonna go with it and I think Scott knows what I'm talking about. We've discussed that, that we don't have the ability to go out and ask for candidates or prospective board members. We, we don't. It's not, it's not the way it's geared up right now. So we may be looking and, and I don't know, procedural change. I don't know where we're going with that right now, so.
The advertisement should come, my mind on.
Cause presently you're kind of forward to me the same two candidates, right?
I, I don't know. I don't think that we went back out and asked.
I would like to hear a citizen.
That was, that was my que, that was our question at the last PNZ is, did this go out as a, as a public request or, or, or just make an announcement, hey, we have some openings. Anybody interested? Or I don't know how the procedure went. I, sorry for the ignorance, but I wasn't there, so I don't know how it all went down. That's what was intended. I'm not sure that we did that just yet. I'm not sure that there's, I haven't heard of an announcement.
And so do we need to direct you to post that?
I think he, he.
You heard it all, right?
He understands where we're coming from.
And I don't know what your timeline is. I mean, I hate to kick the can ninety days down the line because fully staffed, we're okay with six members, but it, all it takes is one person to be out of town and one person to be six and, uh, sick. And then we have a no quorum situation. So uh, there needs to be kind of a, a timeline on, on letting.
Prior, prior to next council meeting, uh, the, the, the PNZ comes back with a recommendation.
Well, they have to wait advertised though.
Huh?
Yeah, that's the problem. Uh, right now. And I'm okay, I'm not saying anything about either the candidates, but I know the rest of the PNZ were saying, hey, is, you know, was this let out or how did this come down? We don't know. Uh, so is it, is it fair, is it fair to go with the two you have? Or do you want to let it go out and then, okay, if it goes out, now it's another thirty, sixty days or we're? I'm just confused, guys, help me out.
Do we need to put it out that far out just because we're gonna put it out to the citizens? I mean, could we, if somebody's interested, they're gonna jump on it.
Um, so I will say for an advertisement standpoint, there was a discussion on that. Um, and so we've hit our main channels. We've hit our social media and website like our normal process.
Y'all did since last meeting or you can?
We did. We should have. I believe we did.
Did y'all push it out using the new email system? Cause I don't think I ever saw that.
No, I think we did our normal, uh, our normal postings. And so if we can go out and do more, it's just a matter of cost. But I mean, it would just be hitting it within a couple of weeks if you guys are putting a month timeframe on it. Because the PNZ is gonna meet a week before you guys. So if you want them to look at it, you're, it's about a three weeks, which isn't really a problem. Um, and then we'll help them, guide them through that. We'll just have to talk about operating procedures.
Well, I, I guess I would, if it, if it doesn't tie your hands.
Yeah.
Um, currently the way you're operated, so, so we say, okay, then this is coming to us on the February agenda. And between now and then, we seek out every avenue we have to push this out and see, see what comes back. Um.
I'll be the contrarian. I have no problem being in the minority. Uh, but if you attend enough meetings, if you attend enough things in our city, you see who truly is invested and is trying to be a part. And I think in the name of our, of the two candidates we have, I have seen both of them present and showing their interest and, and getting behind things. And to think that there's a, a magical bullet out there that somehow didn't know about this and didn't step forward. I, I'm skeptical. I, I, this is the second month. I, I said, I'll be the contrarian, but I'm, I'm happy. I'm, I. You're not the, you're not the contrarian. That was our deal is you give us two names. If we know them, fine. If we don't, you know, we're not getting a, a true packet. And the way it's been, y'all just say, this is who's gonna be on the board. We've never been involved with it. So this is uncharted water. It's not bad. I mean, we just gotta iron it out and figure out what, what's best, but.
So for the next four boards that come appointed, Ms. O'Brien and Brayden Wallace are gonna be very, very busy. Um, because we have no other, these are the only two that we have in our pipeline. There's a problem of some sort.
I agree with, with what Councilman Melton is saying. Um, I feel like I'm kind of in the know as to what's going on with the city and what's posted on social media. And I personally haven't seen it. So that's why, I mean, I, I agree with what Councilman Melton is saying, that if somebody was interested, they would already be on it. But I don't think enough people know that there's an opportunity.
This young man sitting right out here.
Benito?
Benito didn't know it until I sat down beside him at a birthday party. And he said, how do you do that? How, how do you get to, can I come to the city council?
And maybe it would give us also an opportunity to kind of grow the interest.
Out there. People don't know. And I, I, I understand what you're saying, Dave. Um, but I also think that the advertisement is not reaching for whatever reason, whether it's the wrong platform, whether it's, I don't know, the answer to that. Uh, that's what Ben makes a big money for.
So, so really I'm not advocating putting more on us. I, I'm fat, dumb and happy. You send me a name you want on the, we say, thank you. I mean, but I'm just saying, we're seeing, we're. I mean, but I'm just saying, we're seeing, we're just seeing some.
Yeah.
Yeah, we're, yeah. Judge Wagner retired, and he left the board, so we have one chair open.
Is P and Z encouraging people to go sign up at City Hall to be on boards? Are there any good candidates that y'all want to see or know, or? I, to me, to answer that question, I don't think anybody has really reached out to encourage anybody.
But I think that was exactly what you're asking is what the P and Z was asking. How did, you know, how do we get down to?
Has, you know, the enticement been, where who, how we, who's been reached out to? I mean, I stand with you and you, I haven't seen anything, I haven't heard anything. Obviously, we could go out and reach out if if if, but it's like you, so you're saying as well, who's knocking on the doors to come and do this?
And and to keep this from going on to midnight, you can say, look, here are two candidates for this chair, but next time around, we're going to have a different procedure in place. So so that that's, I'm just throwing an option out there for you guys, because you can sit here and bog down on this, but.
I I personally feel like planning zoning is such, is so important, and we appreciate all your work. And I think that's why we have some reservations, because we understand what important position it is and want to give more people that opportunity.
It's not going to be easy anymore. I mean, historically, we had somebody move a fence over six inches on the other property fifty years ago. That's typical what we dealt with three years ago, four years ago. Really, we're going to have to be, have people that can come to the meetings and and really think through some tough situations.
You guys are just so vital to the city council that I think we we just want to make sure we have a a very good fit for you guys, personally speaking. And I I don't know if that's, that's a vibe that I'm getting here. We want a a good fit for you guys, for the betterment of the city and the citizens.
I'm not saying that candidates that presented or not, I'm not saying that at all. Don't, please don't get me, yeah, 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 yeah.
I'm not saying that either.
Yeah, please don't get me saying that. I I, that's not my.
I'm not saying that either.
Okay.
I just want everybody to have an opportunity, that's all.
Yeah, we do, we're confused on how the process works. It's been a while.
Give it thirty more days.
Thirty more days.
What's going to happen to those thirty days?
Ben's going to put out an advertisement on all platforms, and us, together with P and Z, will reach out to people that feel might be a good fit and ask them to apply.
Is that a motion?
Yes.
And 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 it will be scored by?
It'll be scored by planning and zoning, and recommendations will be made at next month's meeting. They'll make a, they'll take the applicants, they'll make a recommendation to the city council next month.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Ms. O'Brien, thank you for your.
Thank you.
Five, five one.
You've been here twice now.
Dave, Dave, did you have your hand?
I've been here more than that.
Okay, five one.
Go to the podium.
Yeah, if you can.
All right, last item.
When you're saying, when you're saying that people aren't involved, those people don't come to the meetings, so they don't, they're not involved. And if they want to be on a board or whatever, then they would make the effort to come to the meetings and, I don't know.
You're correct.
I'm not, am I making sense?
That's fair, that's fair, yes, ma'am.
Well, thank you.
I'll be one of these gentlemen.
Anybody want to take application? Anybody interested in the room? Anybody you're interested?
Last, last item.
Not ready, yes, you're ready.
Last item for this evening. Uh, eleven I, consider taking any necessary action on approval of the city holiday calendar for two thousand twenty-four.
Is it the same calendar?
Exact same.
I make a motion that.
My second.
I make a motion that we approve. You ain't getting holiday pay?
All in favor? Motion carries six zero, meeting is adjourned.